Everybody. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we seal the minutes to the non-public meeting from this evening and from
You just need to do tonight's, right?
No, tonight and the one we had at the fire station.
Yeah, you've done that already.
We sealed those already? Okay. In that case, I'll move that we seal the non-public minutes from this evening's meeting until such time as the majority of the board feels it is wise and prudent to unseal them.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we want to do the non-public minutes?
I would move to approve the selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated May 15th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would move to approve the selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated May 21st, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll jump down to scheduled business. We'll go to B, transfer station, Primex onsite visit.
What about the C, the quote? Do you need that, Diane?
I will, but you can go back after that way they can leave.
Okay, somebody here to talk about the Primex?
Bill Landry. I'm in my capacity as a member of the JLMC this evening, Safety Committee. For those who don't know what JLMC is, yeah, we have a situation where we're making some changes in the operation at the transfer station. You are all well-informed about it. It has to do with residents entering containers to put in trash, et cetera. Actually, it's not trash. It's household goods and lumber and that type of stuff. I've been in contact with our contact at Primex, let them know what we're doing. My main reason for contacting them was to see if they already had something in place from other towns that we could kind of take a look at and use that to fashion our own policy procedures, et cetera. The word back was that, no, this is a first for them. So, they're a little concerned. I gave them a rundown of basically what we were talking about doing. Allowing people to go into the containers, opening up the end, they could go in, throw in material, again, not trash, we're not talking trash here. Household goods, lumber, whatever. And when the floor was filled, we would close the end of the door, then they would go to the new steps, use those that we've got in place. And the response back was, again, it was a first for them, and they wanted to have somebody come out to take a look and see what it is we're proposing and so forth, so that they could react to it. I think that's a good idea. I don't think we should not allow them. You don't want to tell them, they can't come here, and then if we have to file a claim at some point, those same people are going to be the ones that are going to say, well, tough, you know? So, that's all we're looking for at this point, is to get an okay, to have Primex representative come in, we'll take them through the operation. I've had conversations with both Jack and Pete as to how it's going to work, what we're going to do. And so, at this point, that's all we're looking for, is the okay. Once we get that, we'll bring them in. It'll be one person, actually. We'll bring that person in, go through the whole, all the parameters, what's involved, and then we'll deal with them as far as the policy and so forth, and get their feedback.
I mean, me personally, our insurance company wants to look at a safety issue. I don't think it needed to come before the board.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good. It's our responsibility to minimize risk. They can help us.
But thanks for checking.
Right, I appreciate the
Yeah. Heads up.
Yeah, we told them, we want to do what's best for the town, obviously.
Yes.
And there'll be no issue with them, I don't think, once we explain it to them. Once Jack and Pete explain it to them, as to what we're going to do. Again, that's it, really.
Okay, let's jump back one real quick. C, quote for network hardware?
Is that it for the transfer station?
I think so.
So, this is when we tell you it's okay if you sneak out the back? We don't get upset by that. Jack stays for the whole meeting usually, because he just loves this stuff, but
Can you go up there? The gentleman that's, I can't think of his name, that's going to do the trash hauling. He said he's going to start next week, and I didn't ask him that was it, but I think you, we're supposed to have a list of the customers he has down at the transfer station? Is that the way it was left?
Yes, we are expecting the manager of the transfer station and Mr. Saints here to work together, to iron out the details, you know, what's going to work for the transfer station, what's going to work for him. Two of them get together, iron it out.
Right, I don't think it's a reason why you need a list of his customers.
Well, yes, the reason for the list of customers is so that A confirms that, or gives the appearance that all his customers are Newton residents. Okay, number one. And B, if they're using his services and coming in, it's a way to track to see whether or not it's working. And if he only has 10 customers and yet he's bringing in 20 loads a week, well, the amount of waste to the number of customers is not, you know, mixing. That's all it is. It's checks and balances.
Okay.
So, the customers and the addresses, strictly checks and balances.
Yeah, good idea.
I was under the impression that you had to have labels on the bags from which property it was coming from, along with the list, so I can double-check everything, make sure my records match everything.
Right, now, the labels aren't going to have the individual residence addresses or anything like that on them. It just identifies who the hauler is.
Right.
Okay.
By having his label on the bag, that is him assuming responsibility, should something turn up in one of those bags. It doesn't go back to the origin, it just goes back to him.
Okay, all right, I misread the
And the purpose for that is, we only have one participant right now. What if there were two, or three, or four? You would want to know which one of the haulers brought in which bag that has the offensive materials. That's what those tags are for.
Okay.
Could be sticker, it could be imprint, it can be just something that identifies it and that you know how to identify it.
And I mean, you guys are on the front line over there, so we're going to expect feedback from you guys, you know? Positive or negative, you know, whatever it is, as we go through this, let us know what you're seeing, what's working, what's not.
And if something's not working, what do you need to make it work?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Okay, anything else?
All right, thanks.
All right.
Can I just ask that we do the resident sticker policy while they're here, so that they understand?
All right. Transfer station people, want to hold on a minute?
Can I stay for one more item? It's to do with the mirror tag.
Yeah, Bill can leave, but
I do.
All right, let's jump down to the transfer, the
No, we don't
Changes to the resident sticker policy.
So, the notice went out per the request to the board, to all the departments, to see if anybody had any concerns. Diane and I reviewed some stuff and sent that off to the board, but I wanted to make sure Pete and Jack don't have any concerns with the process of these.
Yeah, I read it over, I emailed my okay with it. As I recall, it's going to be to the person, not the vehicle, correct?
Right, correct.
So, as long as their name's on it, I have no problem with that.
Because originally, we talked about the address. I and Diane feel it should have the person's name, because it may be, you know, that person passes on or whatever. It's not with the household for whoever wants to use it. So, I just wanted to make sure that they are on the same
It's issued to the name and address. Okay. Just not to the vehicle. Okay, okay. And if Jane Smith gets a mirror tag, she can give it to her nephew, John Doe, who can take that mirror tag to the transfer station.
Right. Jane Smith doesn't have to be in the car.
No, no, I understand, but I want to make sure they understand too, so I'm not getting calls.
You understand how that works. You would probably want to track how often that mirror tag is used, you know, or how many different vehicles are used for, whatever works for you to track to make sure it's not being abused.
Yeah, I mean, you suddenly see the same mirror tag coming through three times in a day. You might want to question it, but I mean, for the most part, we're anticipating this being used by seniors, maybe people that have disabilities that prevent them from being able to take their own trash there. And, you know, Jane Smith's nephew
Or even just people who don't have a driver's license, or something to that effect. It gives them the ability to utilize something that they pay for, their taxes.
I'm okay with that, absolutely.
So, I have a quick question. I didn't think of this before, but if somebody comes in and says, I want a mirror tag because I don't want to use my Volvo to put the trash in, is that acceptable?
So, what would they be using?
I'm sorry?
They don't want to use their Volvo, so they're going to rent a car or a truck?
We've had some people with a Mercedes or whatever, I don't put the trash in that car, so would they be allowed to get a mirror tag?
What do they put it in?
Well, that's the thing, they'd get somebody else to take it.
That's what I'm asking. So, is somebody else bringing it for them? Are they leasing a vehicle, or are they pulling a trailer?
That's my question, is there a criteria for somebody? Because Diane and I tried, mostly Diane came up with a waiver.
No, as an example, I had a resident state that they felt the position of the resident sticker would be a hindrance in their visibility because they were short. So, I said, in that case, you know, if you don't want it on your windshield because you don't want to obstruct vision, then you can go for a mirror tag.
You may have a lot of people coming in for a mirror tag, because a lot of people complain about it. And those costs
And then they'll complain about having to come in every year to get a new tag, too, whereas a resident sticker, you get once, and you're done.
Yeah, I think if they
That's the goal.
The rule we had when we first started doing the stickers, is you would need a doctor's note saying that that would be an issue for your visibility, because some people, if it's there, their eyes get drawn to it, and that's the only exception we had, either that or you had to have the window sticker on your car.
And it would be a case by case for the board to decide. Well, exactly. I mean, I'm not saying let's hand out mirror tags to everybody.
Oh, I know, but that's what we're trying to figure out, the criteria of giving these out.
No, the criteria, as we listed it, it's so if you've got your own vehicle registered, you're given a resident sticker, that person doesn't get a mirror tag. Because I'm one of those people that I, it's at a place where I, it's visually obstruction for me. This is intended for those people who, for any reason, do not have a vehicle. I'm not able to access the transfer station. It actually works if they
Or a company vehicle.
Or if they want to go to the town beach. Okay. My cousin comes up, yep, we got my tag, we can go to the town beach. I'm a resident, that's my tag. Or, gee, you know, I broke my leg, my brother's driving, you know, here from Placido, and he's taking my trash to the dump for six months while I heal. That's, you know, those are the real reasons for this. It's not, well, gee, you know, I don't want to have to put a resident sticker on my Mercedes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I would make a motion that we adopt the changes to the resident sticker policy as printed.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Are we interested in doing a waiver for people to come in who are picking up the tag for someone else?
No.
No.
I think, you know, what Jim just outlined makes sense, and I don't want to get into this position where people are kind of, you know, leaning towards the mirrored sticker as a, as the solution, other than for what he talked about. And I'm afraid if we start doing waivers for people who don't want to come in, and it kind of, I don't know, almost makes it too easy to come in and just grab an extra one, or whatever, I think.
Four people coming in to get a mirror sticker of the same person.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there may be some people in town that are well-known here in Town Hall, that are non-ambulatory, that
So, then it's left up to add this question.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It looked like Jack had something to say.
Jack, did, hey, Jack, did you have something to say?
Well, I just had a question, but Pete, I think, straightened out. There's a lot of people that come in, don't have a sticker because they register online, so
They still need to come to the Town Hall to get the sticker.
And they go to the Town Hall.
Yes, they still
That's what we usually tell them, yeah.
We need to come here to get a sticker, yeah.
And so, okay, that's all I had, no.
Yeah, just from my own curiosity, because I was there one day, and somebody came in with a U-Haul, and they stopped and talked to you. What are you guys doing at that point? Are you checking?
We asked for identification.
Yeah, yeah.
It happens all the time.
Yeah, I think I see that guy there every week.
Yeah, yeah.
He's doing remodeling.
Yeah, right.
So, you just, you check to see if their license shows that they're a resident?
Yeah, definitely, yes, yeah, yeah. Anybody that doesn't have a sticker, we don't see, we ask for it, yeah.
And they're very
And there's a lot of people that don't have a truck. They use their, a woman came in last week, and she said, well, she called on the phone, said, I need to get rid of two mattresses, I don't have a truck, my son lives in Massachusetts. Can he come over? I said, yeah, as long as you're in a vehicle. So, she's in a vehicle, showed her ID, and we let her in. She called ahead of time.
Did you check to see if there were Massachusetts mattresses?
I flipped them up, they were made in China.
Those tags that are unlawful to remove, that's what they indicate.
But see, that's a perfect example of what the mirror tags are designed for.
Yeah, because people don't have those vehicles.
Let's say that woman just couldn't get out of bed. She currently has to be in the vehicle. That's not realistic for some people.
That sounds like just a one-time thing, to get rid of mattresses.
Yeah.
So, they wouldn't need a mirror tag.
Right, just the one time, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that guy, who's the regular U-Haul guy, he might be a good candidate for the mirror tag. So, you might just mention it to him, not the
He's not a town guy, he's from Kansas City, so he won't get it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We just checked, have you?
Yeah, as long as he's getting charged.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on, we'll go back to a quote for
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quote for the network hardware.
So, Armon gave us a quote to set up for new hardware, for the new fire station, and Mike looked at it, and he, you know, and I looked at it, and I went back, and Armon is pretty much right in the ballpark of, you know, the prices that they're charging. They have, they're a little less in some places, you know, and a little more in others. But they, I also cannot get the three-year extended warranty that they can get if I order it online, so
What is, what is this, what budget does this come out of?
It's going to have to come out of somebody.
So, it's not coming out of the
It's not part of the bond.
The bond, yeah.
So, the cost might, for the difference of $300, I would suggest that we let Armon order the equipment. That way, they get it, they test it, they don't, if something's wrong, they ship it back, we don't have to.
So, so we have a, do we have a line item for this? Is this another one? What I'm worried about is this is another one of those things that was not planned for, which it seems like it should have been planned for.
It wasn't part of the plant, the construction of the building plan.
I think this was one of those, supposed to be a grant, that didn't get through.
Interesting.
All the stuff that, although, you know, if I remember correctly, all that stuff was supposed to be moved over from one fire department to another, and it was supposed to be a grant paying for it, and
This is all new equipment.
This is all new equipment.
The equipment they, yeah, the equipment they have right now is just inadequate. They have all kinds of problems with networking out there, and then the old station, the central
They're all old.
Right, well, I thought all that was supposed to go over there, now the
Well, hopefully it doesn't, because they'll just bring one problem and just carry the problem over. And that building is so much bigger, that their wireless network, they're going to have to do something about it.
You didn't need all new wires, if nothing else.
Well, I think the wires are all run.
Yeah, the wires are run, correct.
Yep. It's the equipment that they need. I think you're right, Bob, I thought that was part of what Larry's grant was asked.
Right, to move all the equipment from one station to another.
No, to buy new, I thought, wasn't it?
It was probably to buy new. I can't imagine all that, that some of that stuff is ancient.
Their computers, everything are the old.
So
Yeah, but this isn't even computers, this is just networking components, really.
So, the million-dollar question is, can we wait on this stuff? Because this goes back to, we're talking about before, like, I don't know what happened, but all of a sudden, these things are coming out, that if we were planning on getting a grant to pay for stuff that was mission-critical, then we made the wrong decision there, because you can't, you can't guarantee you're going to get a grant. A lot of people want the grant. So, I, you know, I see stuff like this, and I get a little worrisome, because all of a sudden, we're going to turn around, and we're going to see an account like the, I always call it the, whatever, the rental fees fund. All of a sudden, we're going to clean that out, you know, for something like this. So, my question is, can we wait on this? Can we, can we wait to see what happens with the rest of the
Well, I mean, this doesn't need to go in until the building's ready to be functional anyways, right?
Well, when they move in there, they need all this equipment to be active. That's the only thing, right?
I think we have a couple meetings to talk about it.
Do we have a lead time on this stuff?
I would suggest, the lead time on probably this is like 30 days. So, you order it, and you probably get it in 30 days. But one thing you need to know is the access points, the wireless access points, that are in the ceiling, in the apparatus bay. The construction manager was going to allow them to use his scissor jack, so, I guess it's his lift, not a scissor, his
While it's there.
Yeah, while it's there. So, if we don't do that, then the cost will go up, because they didn't include renting a lift. I don't know how much a lift costs, don't have a clue.
About $400 to $500.
Okay.
So, typically, does a department, for instance, if they were doing this over at the PD, would this come out of general government buildings, or would this come out of the PD information technology budget? Reason I'm asking is, should the fire chief be telling us where this money is coming from?
Well, it'd be a start, if he has to come back on something else to help cover this. I mean, I didn't budget for it.
Yes, and police department, if they need a new modem, if they need a new router, if they need a new battery backup, they need a new firewall, it would all come out of their police department IT budget.
So, when last I spoke to the fire chief about this sort of thing, he did say that he was confident his regular budget could support anything they needed that might be mission-critical, that didn't fall under the bond. So, I would say, we can wait to hear back from him, but we shouldn't wait too long.
I agree.
So, maybe next, what are we, two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think the scissor lift will be gone
No.
Before that.
So, you want me to just check with the chief, fire chief, and make sure that his budget can handle this?
Right.
Okay. If his, all right, and then you'll come back on the next time, and, okay.
Yeah, we'll probably just do the motion then.
Okay.
But I mean, I would, I would ask the board just to, are we, are we good with going with Armon? I'm good with going with Armon, I just want to know where to bill it to.
I mean, if it's basically the same price, I have no problem using Armon.
Yeah, and the, Armon does all of our networking hardware
Yeah.
And computers as well, so they, in my mind, they are also a preferred provider.
Right. So
And then ongoing support would also be, it's one of those things of trying to get all of the buildings into one, you know, like phone companies, internet companies, networking, et cetera.
Yeah, so, I don't think we'll have any trouble passing a motion on this to be purchased from Armon, we just want to know where we're charging it back to, so
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, let's go to recommend changes to personnel policy.
We're not doing C?
Okay, yeah. I had that crossed off for some reason. Let's do the C, 2018 matrix. Thanks, Matt.
I would move that we adopt the matrix list as supplied on five pages.
Diane, did you see my email about health and Heath?
About who?
Health and Heath. I will second with one correction. The word health is spelled Heath in the matrix.
Oh, is it?
It is.
No, we didn't get that email.
No, I didn't get that email either. Looks like I sent it.
When did you, well, I can check it later, but no, I didn't see that.
Okay, so we should accept it with any spelling errors to be corrected?
Yeah, I can correct it. Yep. At 1:42 PM, I sent it today. Oh, I see it. Yeah, I'll fix that. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One thing I will announce is, I've been working with Nancy, and we are producing a new expanded matrix, and hopefully, we'll be able to get it, so that, like what you see in the police department with the differentials, that will all be worked into the matrix as far as, those will be step increases as opposed to percentage, which takes them off the matrix, or you've got to find someplace else in the matrix where they fit. And then we can go back to having the police officers will be on one line of the matrix, not scattered all over the place.
Okay.
It's just an FYI.
Okay. Now, we've got a D, review recommended changes to personnel policy.
Can we, we skipped over the easement deed under A.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there was nothing, I believe, I
I did look at the document.
I did too, but I don't think we have to sign anything, or it's
Yeah, it doesn't look like it.
It's just an FYI.
Yeah, that was just under the fire station update.
To publicly thank the Beerses once again for helping the town out, by allowing us to use their private telephone pole.
Yeah, so the town now has an easement for the lines?
For the power line.
Right.
Or I should say, Unitil now has an easement.
Yeah, that's the proper
To benefit the town.
Right.
And that's why I wanted to make sure it was mentioned, and that the Beerses were appropriately thanked for it.
We do appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, now are we ready for D? Okay, now are we ready for D?
Yes.
Okay.
It's as well.
Recommended changes to personnel policy.
Did anyone review the suggestions?
I sent the suggestions just to the subcommittee policies review.
And the subcommittee policy does not want to incorporate those changes until the board says yes, please incorporate them.
So is the, is the subcommittee recommending the change? Why don't we tell them what the change is?
Does the board know what the change is?
Probably not.
No.
We're kind of going around there. So.
The board wanted feedback from the other departments. I would like the board to get the feedback from the other departments before the policy committee actually incorporates.
By the way, there was one response.
What, nutshell, what was it? Do you know? Do you remember?
The floating, did town clerk.
Oh, yeah, they wanted to make the floating holiday instead of, instead of a floater, make it be the Monday. So if a holiday falls on a Saturday, it falls on a Monday. And that we observe it on that Monday.
Personally, I think the floater works better.
Me too.
So if that's the only, you know, bit of feedback to entertain, then I say we move forward with the.
Yeah, it was one person.
Right, it's one department. But, I mean, you've got to think of it this way, though. It's one department, but they're the ones that have to work the four-day weekend. And she says it's harder for them to do the floating holiday because it's just one of them has to be there that day. And it's hard for, you know, when you get a lot of people a lot of times. So just one person working that day, it can be very stressful for that person. So that's why Mary, the tax clerk, was suggesting that you close that Monday. I mean, she can do whatever she wants, like you know, as you realize, because she's an elected official, so.
Well, this is what I'm saying, because it's the best of both worlds, right? Because in her case, she could turn around and close, you know, and everybody will have enough notice. So it won't be like she's suddenly closed, it'll be, you know, on the website and everything. And another department who doesn't want to close on the Monday or can't close on the Monday can use it somewhere else or they could shut down on the Monday. So there's flexibility, I think, with the floater.
And that's one of those things that if, if I have the arbitrary right to close my office, then that means that anybody that works in my office is getting it on that Monday.
Okay, that was the next question. So the assistant, deputy assistant would be paid even though the policy states that she should have it on that Monday?
So, no, the, the policy would be the floating.
Right.
She would have a floater. And then she would actually use the floater on that Monday if.
Right, that would be considered a floating holiday.
Exactly.
Right.
All right, that should work, I think.
So it's kind of like the best of both worlds.
So I will move the adoption of the recommended changes to the personnel policy.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, F.
Yeah, per RSA 3195-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of $25 from Edward E. Cunningham to, sorry, Edward A. Cunningham to the Newton Food Pantry.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And if I could just briefly go back, when we're talking about D, I do back up what Lisa was saying is, is whatever feedback that, I assume it's the town secretary that's, you know, putting the, putting it out there, the department has to respond. So whatever feedback you get by the deadline, just send it to everybody on the board. And then it's our responsibility to review that. So then when we get in here, we can, you know, propose to ignore it, use it, whatever. And that's the way it should work, so I agree with that.
Okay.
I have a question on the one that we just actually did. Edward A. Cunningham sent in $25 to pay for his copy of the general election voter list.
That might be a photocopy of the wrong check.
Okay, so why don't we rescind that motion and find out what that check was actually for?
Right.
Well, if you want the general election voter list, like if you, if you're preparing for a campaign or whatever and you want to know who voted last go-around, you do have to pay.
Exactly.
$25 to get, because it's, you know, it's paper, she's going to have to print it all out.
Right, but I thought that went into.
Late this afternoon.
As an offset against the town.
I thought it did too, yeah.
You don't have a copy of that check?
Yeah, it's a copy right here.
Because the check that I gave Diane for $25 was from a person for the food pantry. Is it made out to the Newton Food Pantry of the check?
No.
Town of Newton.
So then we must have the wrong copy then.
That's what I said.
All right.
Okay. Not a, not a problem. I just.
So are you rescinding the motion? Because that name is incorrect.
No, I won't rescind my motion because if it's correct, then this person very nicely requested a voter checklist and sent a donation to the food pantry.
Well, we don't know if it's the same person.
Can't do it.
No, we can't do that.
In that case, I will rescind my motion until we have, we know the correct information.
Okay. All right. Do we have any announcements?
Yeah.
Okay, on May 21st, 2018, the board hired David Glover as a part-time seasonal transfer station attendant at grade five, step one, beginning May 24th, 2018 and ending September 1st, 2018, with the vendor check having been completed. The board signed the vendor manifest dated 5/29/2018 in the amount of $321,818.43, of which $299,943 went towards the school June, sorry, the June school payment. The board signed the firehouse rescue manifest dated 5/28/2018 in the amount of $102,794.67. The board signed the payroll manifest in the amount of $62,146.05 for the pay period 5/13/18 to 5/26/18 with a pay date of 5/31/18. That's it for the announcements.
Okay. Other business?
Do you have the appointments there, Jim?
Excuse me?
Can, are there two appointments there?
Right, but those haven't been signed yet, so we actually have to move them.
Right, so that should be the next thing on your agenda.
Okay. I will move the reappointment of the one-year alternate recreation commissioner member, Angela McVeigh.
I'll second.
Discussion? Ending date on there or?
It's a one-year.
One-year?
One-year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to make this motion, though I thought the planning board could do it themselves. I will move the reappointment for a three-year alternate position on the planning board to Robert Zalinski.
Yeah, I thought.
Second for discussion then. Yeah, I don't think we, we just kind of accept them for filing, right?
But he hasn't been attending any meetings.
He actually attended the last meeting. He has now switched things so that he can attend them.
But it's an alternate, so he doesn't necessarily have to go unless they need him.
Okay, if that's the planning board, that's not board of selectmen.
Yeah, I think we talked about this with the ZBA, we just kind of.
Yeah, the ZBA is appointed by the moderator.
Right, but the planning board, they do their own thing.
Right, the planning board has the power to appoint their own moderator, their own alternate.
You give it to Mary Jo and she prepares it and swears them in.
Oh, okay, so we need to redo that one.
How about this, I move that we forward this appointment to the town clerk for Robert Zalinski for an alternate member for one year for the planning board.
Three-year.
Three-year.
Is second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I move to sign vendor manifest dated June 5th, 2018 in the amount of $54,679.99.
I'll second, must be no school payment.
You got it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move to sign veterans' tax credit for MAP 10-2-10-12 for tax year 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to sign denial for elderly exemption for tax MAP 4-5-14-12. It does not meet criteria.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I sign, I move to sign the denial for elderly exemption for tax MAP 1-1-7 as it does not meet criteria.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign requisition number 3032 for recreation commission in the amount of $650 to reserve Wally, the green monster, for an appearance at Old Home Bay, September 15th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other business?
I will remind the board, you received an invitation to the, join the planning board for an informational meeting regarding the MS4 report. And that I believe is on June 26th. It'd be nice if there were more than one selectman more.
Okay.
And I want to encourage the other people in town, the other places, departments that received invitations, please attend, it is fairly very important.
Okay, anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Well, I'd like to make one announcement, I'd like to thank everybody, the recreation department and everybody else involved for having a successful Memorial Day parade and everybody that was involved in it.
Yeah, I think it came out really nice. I hope the Sanborn Band is able to participate again next year.
Agreed.
Okay.
Now I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
At 8:12 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.